City of San Juan Commission, today, November 22nd, 2016, at 6:00 PM. If we can rise for an invocation. Mr. Arjona, can you be just in invocation?
Our heads. Dear Lord, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion and power sharing wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs can reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today and always. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We can face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll maybe seated. We have one public comment by Rick Ramires, if you can come. Presentations, item 5A, presentation department reports, Department of Finance, Fire, Utilities, Police, Municipal Court and City Manager.
Mayor Commissioners, good evening. We have all department directors available if there's any questions. And I'd like to say just a couple of things on our report for the, some of the project updates that we currently have within the city.
Go ahead, Mr. Arjona.
Wanted to touch base first on the brush drop-off side. Just want to let you know that the, the staff has been doing a tremendous job as far as cleaning the site. It's already 99% completed. All of the brush is pretty much gone. The only, the only thing that we currently have is the tires, but that should be taken care with maybe the next couple of weeks. We have a load, loading, and have maybe two loads of tires that we need to dispose. And then after that, we should be pretty much clean on, on the drop-off side. So I want to congratulate the staff of the, Ms. Carmen Gonzalez. In the next couple of weeks, the next few days, we're going to be talking to the TCEQ representatives out of Carlinson. I'm going to be with Ms. Gonzalez and them, so that, giving us the advantages of, of keeping the brush drop-off side or maybe going with the citizen collection side. And then we'll bring them before you for discussion on that. The street projects that you know, have a question, ma'am? On the street projects, as you know, we have an agenda item that we're going to hopefully vote on it with the, on the contract, on the, with the engineers. And then after that, we'll continue, we'll start with the reconstructing of the, some of the streets. And today, we met with the, some of the folks on the, our staff with a new Freedom Sidewalk project. We met with the ADA consultant. Unfortunately, some of the ramps that they were built by their contractor were, didn't pass. There were some deficiencies. We're going to, they're already been addressed. And the, we're talking to the contractors and they need to fix them to the standards that is required on the ADA. And the strategic plan, Leslie.
Let me just ask a question. When you say that they need to be fixed, we, we knew that from the get-go that had to be done. Who's going to pay for that when they come back?
It'll be the contractor. They have the specs, engineering specs, I mean, they did.
And as far as the loose bricks, I know that there has been work done. Have you gone back to inspect that?
Yes, yes, we did.
We're still within the timeframe and did they secure it with some concrete or did they secure it just with sand?
What they did, they, they raised the, the curb and they secured it with, with not concrete, but also, but only with the sand. And they compacted it. We did a walkthrough on that and it looks a lot better than before, ma'am.
Let me go back to the brush site. When you talk about the holding site, what is going to be the plan since, once we clean all of it up? What's the plan going to be as we move forward, once we've been cleared by TCEQ? How are we going to handle that?
Well, I have, Mr. Arjona and I have met and what I'd like to see, continue to pick up the brush and that. But I'd like to see it as a transfer station where the, we have certain containers, we'll have an employee there, like in a little house. Residents will come in if they want to dispose of items that we normally don't pick up or it's out of schedule. They'll come in and then we'll have containers for them, labeled tires, brush, whatever debris in that.
When we talk about containers like the, the ones that go on the roll-offs?
The roll-offs. Maybe, and I'm not saying maybe, do it like they do in Edinburgh, and I hate to use Edinburgh, but they'll charge us like, I, I do it. Every three months, they charge you $25 to do whatever. They give you a little permit and you can go as many times as you want to dispose of whatever you have. And we keep it real neat. We'll have an employee there or two to make sure that it stays as neat as it looks now.
And so would we be, if the folks are, folks are bringing themselves, are they going to be lowered so that they're able to dump?
Yes, we talked about that. I talked to my employees, tell Mr. Arjona, but it's a good idea because I even have had to help some of the elderly because they're too high and they can't.
They're too high. There's no way we expect them to throw things.
I think they do it, when they, they put concrete, they lower it and they put the containers down there or they'll tip them a little. So we'll, we'll have a plan.
Start working at that.
Yes.
Because once that's cleared, if we're going to allow the, our folks to come back and start doing that, we want to make it so it's accessible to them. We're going to have to also have somebody with a truck or with a forklift to be doing that. You don't want to put that much manpower out there. So you'd be working on that and bring that back.
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Arjona.
Yes, and, and because in the strategic plan, I have already submitted some of the pictures that, that needed to be submitted over to Mr. Mata. Some of the verbiage that there was misspelled here, grammatical errors, department names that they were spelled incorrectly. I already spoke to Mr. Mata, he's pretty much got everything ready. We'll present it on the next meeting.
Ongoing projects?
Those are going to be presented here in the next couple of items unless you want the, I've got Mr. Mark Ramires here, available to present the Los Flores, Los Chaparrales and the water plant, unless you want to wait until the next item.
We have him, he'll be talking to the water plant, right?
It'll be about the water plant, the other two projects.
Right. All right.
I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
Ms. Gonzalez, as far as, what's the total cost up to this point in reference to the brush?
I'm not really, I couldn't answer that. It has to be the finance director.
Okay. By any chance, do you know Leroy? No? Okay.
I do know it's not as high as the companies that wanted to charge us. If we went over 190,000, that includes salaries and working on Saturdays and, but, you know.
We can bring it back on the next.
Yeah, I was just going to ask.
I think it's more up to the.
Yeah, if, you know, the next meeting we have can get me that information. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for any of the other?
I have one, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Mr. Enrique's scuffle. Are we up and running?
Contract last week, so we're just waiting for them to bring it back once they have it on their agenda. And then we'll start with the, with the scuffle.
Will we start before the new year or after the new year?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, Commissioner, it'll probably be after the new year. The contract was sent over to the, to the Commissioners Court. Once it's approved, then they'll come back to us. We'll, we'll need to do some extracting of data and I guess play around with the data, make sure that the data that was transferred over is accurate. And then at that point, we'll, we'll go live. It'll be after the new year.
Any other questions? All right, moving on to public hearing. A, conduct a public hearing and consider an ordinance in first reading for a special use permit for a drive-through and for sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premise consumption in a property zone, general business district legally described as Lot 5 McBride subdivision, located 901 West FM 495, as requested by Cesar Martinez. Mr. Cervantes.
Commissioner, good evening. Mr. Cesar Martinez is leasing the drive-through, leasing the drive-through business from the property owner and is applying for a special use permit to operate AJ Stop &amp; Go drive-through business and to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premise consumption. The drive-through business has been in dislocation for several years. The proposed days and hours of operation are Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Saturdays from 9:00 AM to 1:00 AM and Sundays from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM. This business will generate additional sales taxes for the community. This went before the Planning and zoning commission on November 3 and they recommended approval unanimously.
I'd like to open the public hearing at 6:10. Are there any members of the audience that wishes to make any statements for or against? Any members of the audience for or against? Any questions from the commission? So this is an existing and we're not changing anything except the owner, is that correct?
It's a, it's a new operator and so that's why they're going through the process so that they can sell alcohol.
I'd like to go then, if there are no other questions, close this at 6:11. Is there a motion for approval as presented?
Omo.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign motion carries. For appointments, A, consider removal or appointment of a board member related to the Parks and Recreation Board. Mr. Willingham.
Yes, Commissioner, good evening. We had a board member, Diana Almaguer.
Please come forward.
Oh, sorry. Good evening. For the record, Patrick Willingham, Parks and Recreation. We had Mrs. Diana Almaguer submit a formal resignation, or she indicated through email that that would be her formal resignation, so we have a spot vacant to be, to be filled.
Very good. I'd like to go ahead and open it up.
I'd like to nominate Claudia Alvarado to replace Diana Almaguer.
What's her name?
Claudia Alvarado.
Have any other nominations? Is there a motion?
Omo.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Make sure you let her know.
Thank you very much.
Under item 8A, consider authorizing the city manager to sign a contract with Perez Consulting Engineers for paving construction improvements. Project phase, Mr. Cervantes and Mr. Arjona.
I guess I'll read the memo. There is 1.5 million available for this project. During the October 11th, 2016 meeting, the City Commission authorized the city manager to negotiate a contract with Perez Consulting Engineers to undertake the engineering plans for this project. The contract is included in your packet for your, for your review and approval. Exhibit B of the contract includes the list of streets that will be, will be repaved as a result of this project. The streets listed are based on the recently completed pavements condition study that was conducted by the Civil Engineering Department of the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley. In addition, staff request for the City Commission to select three streets to be selected as alternate bid items. The reason for this, if we get, if we get real good bids, we will have, we would like the option to include one, two or three additional streets to maximize on the.
And what you did was on these streets, they come from the last one that we reviewed?
Yes.
They remained in the same category, failed.
Exactly.
Serious.
Serious and then.
Very bad. Poor.
Poor, right?
Yes, it doesn't exhibit B of your contract.
We didn't change anything?
No.
Okay.
But we're, for three additional streets to be selected, in case we get real good bids, we could also maybe do one, two or three, depending on the, on the, on the bids, to maximize the funds. So for the three streets, you could just go down, go down the list or select other streets.
Okay, I have a question and I don't know, Mr. Arjona. The amount, we stayed as 1.5. I know that we had 2.8. Of the 2.8, we subtracted.
Seven.
700,000, leaving us at about 2.1. Why are we 1.5?
So this is phase one of, of the.
I know, but this is, this is the same funding?
That was, that's the money that I was told that was available for phase one, 1.5 million. I'm not sure.
It was 2.1 because of the additional extra funding, the surplus. So yes, you're right, ma'am, it's 2.1. It's a typo here.
I would like to be able to, we need to take advantage, that money's already in the bank and it needs to be used for these streets. So go back and take a look at that.
Well, we, we recommend add, add, go down the list and just add streets until we have the 2.1.
Yes.
We could, we could easily.
And of course, it's only an estimate. Now, when we go off for bids, how do we do it so the folks don't say, well, we know how much money they got, we're going to bid this high?
Well, it's still, they're still competitive bids, right? So they want to, the contracts are, are when I want to submit as low a bid as possible so they get the project.
So what we can figure, and I guess as we're looking into, because we are able to cover the categories, failed and serious, and we're entering to the very poor. So the very poor is, and these are based on 25 and 30, correct?
Right.
And I'd like to know at any point, I know this is for the contract, but like when you come back and with the engineers come back, I'd like to know what we've done with the emotion.
Okay.
So make sure that's back on the agenda at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, when the engineering gets awarded so that we can discuss that. And maybe that's a possibility, Mr. Arjona, for increase in streets. Okay, Ms. Wise, I know you're, you're sitting in for Mr. Vialovos. You spoke with Mr. Vialovos regarding the contract?
I did.
And what is it that he, did he have anything he wanted you to convey to us or you want to convey?
His, his only concern regarding the contract was an arbitration clause. He would prefer that there not be an arbitration clause in the contract.
I think, I didn't see one, but we want to make sure. Are you aware of an arbitration clause?
I believe so.
Okay, can you tell me where it's at? Because we definitely want to negotiate that. I see the controlling law on general considerations, page 12. We have, we do have an indemnity clause on page 13, where the owner will require that any contract subcontract performing work in connection with drawings, the owner and engineer and the consultants shall be, and will be agreement to hold them harmless and identify and defend.
He did have concerns regarding the indemnity clause as well and stated to me that he would like to speak with the engineers before signing a contract.
Okay.
So he said he's available anytime tomorrow to speak and discuss these certain clauses in the contract.
So as far as the, I look at the fees and I'm, I'm pleased with the 6%. I think that's, that definitely helps the city to make this go further. I don't see any problems with just having him sit with you to talk about those particular clauses. So subject to those and negotiating through those, I think we'd be okay to, to award it tonight.
Right, yes.
With just that condition.
Yes.
And anything else that you want to add?
That was pretty much it, the arbitration clause that Ms. Wise is saying.
Okay.
I guess we'll, just we'll add streets so that we reach the, the 2.1, the 2.1 million.
Make sure we verify the amounts to make sure that we're using all the money that was, that we voted on to be for, solely for streets. And minus the amount for the, for the police department.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the, the item that, or the amount that we missed was the surplus amount of money that left over.
Right, that we're going to discuss.
Yes.
And hopefully we're not dipping into that either.
Right.
Okay. Are there any questions on this contract? If not, is there a motion to approve subject to the arbitration and the indemnity clause that need to be reviewed?
Omo.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. B status, report on the water plant number two expansion project, Los Chaparrales Drainage Improvements, Paseo de las Flores Drainage Improvements. Mr. Cervantes and Mr. Arjona.
Mr. Ramires from, here, there's a, there's a report in your packet and Mr. Ramires is here in case you have questions.
Yes, go ahead and bring him forward.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
If you have any questions on any of those projects, we'll be.
Go ahead and walk us through what's, where we are.
Sure. We'll start off with the water treatment plant project. We're approximately 61% complete on that project. It's a little bit delayed than what we would have expected at this point in time. We're pressing the contractor to, and the bonding company to provide us with the unupdated schedule. They have failed to provide that to us.
How long have you been asking for that?
It's been a while.
And what's the problem?
I think the, the bonding company is tweaking the, what the contractor provided to them so they have full control over the contractor since it was an appointed contractor by them. According to the contractor, the feedback that I'm getting from him is he provided that schedule to them a long time ago and they're tweaking it. What that means, I don't know. We're fixing to send an email or correspondence to the bonding company and see what they respond. Last time that we heard from them, they were going to provide us a schedule pretty soon and it was going to be representative of completing the project within a lot of time.
Looking at March and April.
Yes, ma'am.
For a completion date.
Correct.
So we're at 61% right now, you're, and the fact that they're not coming forward.
Yeah, and the 61% also, please understand that there's a lot of materials there already of the project. So that kind of varies that number a little bit. But the, what concerns us is the, when you go in and, and work into the existing component of the plant, that's really a lot of time that gets put into that. That's our concern because that's the work that's still pending. A lot of the work, the new work is pretty much complete, most of it. But the work, the rehab kind of work that, that's going to take place, that's really what we're concerned about, their timeline on that. It's hard to put a number on that because again, it's rehab. When, once you get in there, you don't know what you're going to find. There might be a lot of things that further delay that. But again, the contractors, when they bid on it, they take that into consideration in their bids.
Right.
And so right now, we're just waiting for them to provide us an updated schedule and tell us where they're at with that.
Well, I know that the, the reason it, the timeline, so in April, we start having our higher usage come summer. Are we going to having to bring down some of those, are we going to be switching into the newer area, to the new, to the new part of it while the other is being rehabbed? And are we thinking that that's going to be ready to happen so we're not caught in some kind of?
Correct. So there's, there's two components that, let me, one of them is going to be the transfer pump station, which that one I don't foresee any delays, any further delays on installing that pump station.
Once the other one's completed.
Exactly. And what that pump station will be able to do is that the water that you're producing out of the north plant can be pumped and stored at the south plant, which will allow a little bit and give you a little variance in there. But on, on the summer, if we're at that plant, the new plant is not completed, then we might have problems with that. I'll let David insert, go into that.
Yeah, that's one of the issues that we're looking at, ma'am. Sorry, Commissioner Publicity, to this director. One of the things that we're looking at is, in fact, we got a, a report from the engineer to look at their existing pumps. Because the, part of the existing pumps supposedly were rehabbed back in 2011 when the original plant, for the plant started. Unfortunately, between now and then, there's been a lot of corrosion on these pumps. So we're having different vendors come in, give us a, a proposal to rehab those pumps. So when we do get to March and April, we have them available to pump full capacity. Because right now, we have a couple of them that aren't pumping to full capacity. So we're, we're getting an assessment to find out why, why it's there and why back in '11 it wasn't addressed. Or if it was addressed, what went wrong? Because it's only been five years since it addressed it and the pumps aren't pumping to full capacity.
Was this not looked at when we were looking at the rehab of this?
My understanding is that they handed that to the former director and the former director presented a report that that had already been looked at. We're currently looking for that report. We've already contacted the vendor that did that assessment back in 2011 and the rehab of those pumps.
Who were cleared at that time.
At that time, they were cleared. So we want to take a look at that and see what the actual structural integrity of the pumps were at the time. Because we do have pumps right now that aren't pumping at full capacity. And that's why we have issues when we do have issues in the summer. And then it's the same thing as he mentioned, as the engineer just mentioned about the corrosion of the system. We, last week, actually, we had a section of the, of the plant on the pumping system that just blew out from it being corroded. On the inside, there's no way to see it from the inside. So there was so much back pressure on it that it just completely broke out. So based on that, we want to make sure that we're ready when they start constructing, working on that plant. So we don't, we don't see any unforeseen issues of pipes breaking once they start taking them apart.
You're saying, so when the rehab begins, you've identified.
Exactly.
Will that all be covered with what we have allotted, is what I want to know too.
There was a very, remember, there was a very small contingency in this project. And one of the things that we're waiting for is from Texas Water Development Board. They haven't responded to our, our email on moving, actually changing the scope over to some of the money that was left over from one of the other projects to help cover some of that cost.
Do that all the time.
Yeah. And unfortunately, right now, everybody seems to be off for holiday break, so nobody's responded back. I did try to contact Miss Mandy Aloy over there and I got a response back that she was at office when we're returning till Monday. So I'm hoping she'll respond by Monday and let us know what the status is on that. Because there was, I forgot the amount of funds that were left over, that weren't used, not left over, that weren't used for the other project. So we're hoping we can add more scope to that project to address some of the shortfalls in, in that contingency money for the, for the pump. So that's what we're looking at right now.
So what I'd like to see, you know, based on what you're talking about regarding the failure for response from the contractors or from the bond company? Or both?
At this point, it's both, really.
Then I'd like to have some paper trail here. I'd like to see a counsel also at least review and involved, just to make sure that we're documenting. I think it's extremely important. I would hate to see anything further develop that we have, that already delayed this project. And what else can be done right now to make sure that we have put enough pressure on them that they need to stay on schedule? We, you know, especially the bond folks who understand that they've taken it on with that assurance that it's going to get done with what we've initially began this project with.
Correct. And, and the request that we bid on them for progress schedule was in writing letters sent to the bonding company directly, copy contractor, city staff and, and the, you know, we're still, and their response was in writing as well, saying that they will.
Give them a timeframe for them to respond?
Yes. Trying to remember what that timeframe is. Right now, it's not clear on the top of my head. But, but we followed up through meetings at the project, trying to get them to provide that as well. So we're at that point where enough is enough and we need from them to respond one way or the other.
So I'd like, I'd like a report at the next.
Sure.
I don't want this to go back like last time, you know, we sent them, we were waiting. We just need to be consistently, and if a timeframe comes up, that if you said seven days, 14 days, whatever that time was, then we revisit it at that time. It really needs to be consistent. And I'd like to know what they're doing. So we have movement before, you know, we're losing time.
Correct.
So I'd like, and I'd like to go ahead, if you can provide copies to Mr. Arjona that we're documenting or you're copying him. Are you copying him on your letters?
Yes, usually those type of letters will come from Mr. Arjona and Mr. David Salinas.
Okay, then just provide the, this report that we get next week, the, two weeks from now.
I have a question, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Mr. Salinas, how often do you guys meet in reference to this project and who's involved in this meeting?
We, once a month, the city managers involved, myself, Mr. Cervantes, the engineer, all the different project contractors, their representatives, Texas Water Development Board. If they're not present at the meeting, we do conference them in. Finance also is present at the meeting. Either Mr. Mr. Garza or Mr. Gonzalez are available at the meeting.
Said once a month?
We're meeting once a month, yeah. That's something that we, we may want to discuss and move up to twice a month. That's something that we, we may want to discuss and move up to twice a month.
Yeah, that's what I was going to recommend.
To keep moving forward. We do anticipate that there's more work done, because they kept on telling us they're waiting on some of the material to get on site, material's on site now. So, a lot of the underground work should be getting done, a lot of the valve installations should be getting done, so we, we hope that a lot more work than just touching up and painting will be done, because that's really been what's been happening for the past month or so. They've just been caulking and sealing and painting the structure that was being constructed.
Yeah, especially with these issues that are rising, I think you guys need to meet more, you know, so that way we can, you know, get the ball going and see who you guys need to move, you know, because obviously, this is a very, very big project, and we need to try to get that completion date.
One of the things that's very unique about this project is the contractor that's out there doesn't have any staff to work on the project, and that was based on the way the project was originally bid it out and the contract that came in, and also the Texas Water Development requirements to procure all the subs and contractors that came along. The way that the takeover agreement came along, it was where the bonding company would select a contractor, but that contractor, which in this case is Vertex, was not procured, but they were allowed to be able to work based on the takeover agreement. They've since come back, the contractor, and they've asked to be procured into the project so that they can hire their own hands and try to speed up and get more work done.
The Texas Water Development Board allowed that?
Well, they're allowing that process, but I think it's like the city's.
Actually, it's already been advertised for, ma'am. I came to the commission the last month, yeah, last month.
The Water Development Board is on board with that?
Yes, yeah, they're on board. They authorized it, we, they've already approved the language. Ms. Carmen's already advertised for it. There's, there's some issues on the proper procurement process to follow, so that delayed the process a little bit. Once that got squared away, it's been advertised, in fact, you'll see it in the newspaper, Sunday, it'll be on there Sunday, so we're, once, once that's advertised, we'll, we'll be able to procure Vertex as a contractor, and Texas Water Development Board's on board with it, so. So then, at that point, they'll be able to hire personnel and start doing a lot of the work in-house themselves.
I'd like them at the next meeting.
Actually, there might be a problem with, or that might be something that the city attorney can address directly with the bonding company. That request was made previously by the city, and the response from the bonding company was that they would not allow the contractor to be present at Commissioners' meetings. So, I think at that point, where we left it off was if the city really wanted to have somebody from the contractors or the bonding company, then it would have to be addressed directly with your attorneys to their attorneys.
Okay, we will do that.
But most of the times, those are real limited, not only this project, for other projects. It's the same bonding company that had those, some of similar projects, and they're real thin in all the projects, and they're delayed. Not only this project, but several projects I'm aware throughout the district.
I think by, by following the process would give us a little bit more teeth and actually force them to come and meet with us and give us an update, because now they'll be procured to the proper process.
I mean, they want to pick up their check, they need to come and talk to us. Is that what we need to do?
Actually, you know, it's, this is, we've never, in many years of experience that the company has had as engineers, we've never had a project go to the bonding company, and it's a new experience for us, because it somehow does take a little bit of the power that we have, you know, to control the bonding company and the contractor. A lot of times, it's the money, you know, we hold the contractors by the money that they, you know, bill into the contract. In this case, to be honest with you, it's been two months since the contractor has billed to the city to withdraw any money for the project, because the bonding company's paying directly all their subs or all the equipment. So, to tell them, and that's one of the things that, you know, I've thought about, to tell them, hey, we're not going to pay you next time, it seems like they really don't care, because they're, they're costing that out at their end. So, again, it does take a little bit of power from our end to say, to push the contractor that way and say, you need to do this, or we'll start paying you. It's not working out that way in this, the way this contract is planning out. Again, it's, we're experiencing this for the first time, as far as taking the bonding company taking over a project, and it hasn't been fun so far, I'll tell you that.
About that company go, that's the whole thing? Well, it definitely relayed the message, we have to get legal involved to just request their presence, so we can get some information on the schedule, which is, I think is very important. We will do that, but keep us informed and update us at the next meeting, and hopefully we can get them to be present as well. All right. Any other questions on the water plant? Okay, let's go on to the Los Chaparrales and the Paseo de las Flores.
Sure. I'll go on with the Los Chaparrales first. They're looking pretty good, they're a hundred percent complete with the, all the underground pipe and the stormlines, it's all installed. Actually, I went out there today, this afternoon, and they were waiting on some density results to be able to pave Sergeant Trevino. They're, they got the results today, they should be ready, weather pending, should be ready to pave tomorrow, Sergeant Trevino.
That's going to be the section that they're responsible for?
Correct.
And the county's been notified that this is about to start?
On my understanding, yes, ma'am. And then by, they should be done with that section by tomorrow afternoon. If they do that, they'll come back the following week and then start working on the subdivision area of the paving.
The streets that will be affected and will be paved by this project, will it be around Paisano and Sendero?
Yes, ma'am.
And how many more streets are left in our, are these streets in our, in our, our The, the other ones, Mr. Arjona, can you check? The, the ones next to it, what is the other street? By Paisano?
Four streets, I think these streets are, are in decent, they're not in the.
How many, how many streets is this neighborhood? Is it the four streets? Four streets and then the ones that go across, correct?
Yes, I think so, yes.
There's, there's one that goes across from.
Sendero?
Sendero, I want to say that that one was.
And then it's Las Brisas?
Las Brisas is there.
Not Las Brisas.
Some, some, some.
The one that runs across in the very back? Should be one, two, are those in that same?
The one who had the same, remember that, that they, what was the name of the street?
Retama, that's, that's not going to be part of this.
They're not on the serious nor, nor very poor.
Has the, when we were doing a lot of the work with our equipments, the equipment during this project, was it confined to a certain area, or has, have we looked at, you know, some more beating up on the other streets?
It was pretty much confined within that area. I don't think that there was anything that went off, off of the streets that they were working on.
Las Brechas is the one in the back?
There's, there's a little section at the cul-de-sac where that, on the right-hand side of, north of Paisano, where we turn there, and we have some units in there. There's a little section of that north street that's getting paved up to where the boundaries of the project, but it's not much.
There's a Paisano Avenue.
Right, Paisano, and it's Las Brechas in the, in the very back.
Very back.
That was under that, Las Brechas, Paisano, and, I don't remember the other ones. What one? El Campo? Only because I know that if, if seen part of that, I know that back one is the one that gets flooded, and that one's got, had a lot of water damage, because it was the very back one.
I think this.
How far are you going in?
I would say, I'd have to estimate about fifty, a hundred feet off, off to the, to the right. So, it's not much, much of that area. Again, it was mainly for the damage that was going to be done when you put it, take out and put the new units in there.
And then the corner of Retama, that's going to be on the county side of the work, is that correct?
That's on the other side, right?
That's the one that runs north and south at the end of the last street, after short road. So, the county will come in to do from Raúl Longoria up to where you all are, our project is finishing up, and then from that other side of the street all the way to Retama?
Retama.
Not to Cesar, correct?
Well, they, they kind of said that they were probably looking into all the way to Cesar.
But the commitment to us is up to Retama?
To Retama, right.
Okay. All right, and so, when, when did you say that that would start happening, since we're done with the?
The paving and.
Yeah, the irrigation part is done, not the drainage part.
So, the paving and Sergeant Trevino should take place, whether permitting, tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And tomorrow, then, then the following, the Sendero and Paisano, the following week.
Okay. All right, so we've notified our partners for coming back and forth in that area. It's good to know that that's done. Okay. Las Flores?
On Las Flores, also I visited this project this afternoon as well. The contractor's already working on, they had done about five hundred feet or so of the pipe work on, along Moore Road. They're looking to probably finish that up in the next, not this week, next week, and install all that line. That would mean that all the piping is completed, except for the subdivision area, which would be this area here. So, this piece of work would still be pending, but everything else from here along this way would all be completed as far as the piping. They're looking to start in this area here the following week, when they come back after the holidays, which that would be good. And then, as soon as they do that, they'll come back, and once they're finished with all the piping here, come back and repave this Moore Road as well. And the only thing that would be pending after that is that crossing on the canal.
Are you, are you on county road, on Moore Road? You know that's county, right?
Yes. Not a hundred percent sure of that, but I think it is.
So, we.
Yeah, part of the street is in the county, it's paved, and we're going to tear it up, so it's the right thing to do to repair.
Oh, they, that, is that part of the, that had been paved on this, coming down on Nebraska, or no?
I'm sorry, say that again?
We had, the county had paved some, for Moore Road south, they had not paved. Or had they paved?
County repaved to the north.
Yes.
Okay.
They repaved that.
Okay. And what is the boundary over here? On the, it would be the east side?
This right here?
Yes. Is that a street, or it's just on?
It's, it's just an easement.
Just an easement, okay. Okay. Very good. And so, the, the track where the police department is, is right, that empty lot over there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Does it affect anything on that one street neighborhood?
Eventually, when they get in here, you know, they're going to have to coordinate traffic control and what have you, to, to allow those people to, to have access to their, you know, to their houses, obviously. But they'll coordinate that with the neighborhood, and they've been, they've been good about sending notices to the people and coordinating with them.
Very good. And that would start when again, coming?
Hopefully, next week. That's what they're looking at.
And take how long?
It might take about, I would say about a week, two weeks maybe, depending on, on weather and, of course, the traffic and what have you.
And as far as our costs, everything was kept within budget, no overruns, no change orders?
So far, good.
Good.
There's only one thing that the, they've been, you know, back and forth, we've been back and forth with them, that canal crossing. Some things have changed, the irrigation district did, you know, want something different than what they originally had told us they wanted. We've been going back and forth with them, we're trying to have a scenario where there is no change orders. We're working with both irrigation district contractor, see how we can figure that out. But at this point, no change orders.
Very good.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any questions? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Undersea, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the mowing lots services. Ms. Gonzalez? Not you anymore.
I mean, we'll take that, ma'am.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good evening.
On November third, two thousand and sixteen, staff received four bids for mowing of widdy lots from the following companies. TDL Tractor and Lawn Services, Molina Landscaping, Maldonado Nursery and Landscaping, and Conde Landscaping. Staff recommends the widdy lot contracts to TD, TDL Contractor and Lawn Services from Alamo, and Molina Landscaping from Donna, Texas. Both of those are the two lowest bidders.
Bonded?
Yes, ma'am. When they, when we go into contract, they're going to have to provide all the documentation that's necessary, as far as the insurance and workers' comp information and so forth.
Oh, we had Molina work with us?
I believe so, yes.
We currently had one?
Right now, we're, right now, we'll get Molina and another company, but the other company, they, they have some, they did for this one. Molina, they do real good work for the city.
Now, I know that this is for lots, the alleyways and that, Ms. Gonzalez, what are we?
The employees are the ones that are doing the alley scent, we didn't budget for that, Mayor.
Okay, and this has been budgeted for two companies?
We have three, four thousand in, in the budget for mowing of widdy lots, and that has been sufficient.
For the entire year?
Yes.